Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, June 28, 2022, and the time is 1:00 P. M. We are gathered here for our briefing meeting. And we'll begin today by welcoming Dr. Amy Desmore and Ms. Kelly Letcher from Finance with the preliminary budget update. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. And so I'll turn it right over to Ms. Letcher so she can get us into some information for the FY '23 preliminary budget. And we've have a lot to do before now in our final budget approval, so we'll go through that now. Ms. Letcher.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you so much. It's great to be back. Thank you.
So as you all know, we get our funding from the Florida Education Finance Program, and that is a calculation done by the state for the state and local allocations that we receive. And for FY '23, our allocations from state and local funds is $842 million, which is a really good budget from them for this year. That is actually a $63 million increase over FY '22. So while that sounds really, really good, later on, I'm going to talk to you about some things that come along with that nice increase that they gave us. So the BSA, the base student allocation, is up $214.49, so we're at $4,587.40. That is the bulk of the increase in the BSA. However, we did have a reduction in our district cost differential, and that is basically the cost of living that we have here in Lee County. So they're doing some changes, and I don't know if you all remember, but a couple of years ago, they had actually proposed to make some changes that did not go through. Well, they did it this year, and they're doing some leveling out. And so Lee County, they have reduced. That reduction would be about a $2 million reduction to us. However, this year, they put in a hold harmless so that we don't see that reduction this year of the $2 million. So however, I do fully suspect that next year, we will see that reduction in play. Our weighted FTE has, or unweighted FTE has actually increased $2,699. So we have an FTE projection of $99,908. So we're just under $100,000 for next year that they're proposing that we will be at. Some of the pieces that are within that is the teacher salary allocation. So we did receive an increase in that of about, the total is about $8 million. We are at our 47.5. That was by state law that we had to get to. So we are at the 47.5 for the base teacher salary. So all of the dollars that we have now will go for growth and some additional rate raises. So that is a good thing for us. The Safe School allocation did increase by $945,000, which is a good increase for us there as well. However, if you remember, this district's putting in over $1 million already, so it's really kind of an offset for us in that area. The digital classrooms is being removed from the calculation at this point. So that's 123 million, or 123,000, thank you, sorry, that we will not be seeing next year that we have had in the past. The state this year had a student reserve allocation that they provided to us. So if the state had not calculated enough money to cover the growth in the student population, as you all know, we usually see a proration. This year, we saw the proration, but because the state put in the allocated student reserve funding, it covered our proration. So actually, we didn't see the proration that we normally would have. Our proration would have been about $8 million, but because of that, we didn't see it. And there was actually some additional money in that reserve, so we saw another $2 million in the current year from that. So that was $10 million that we would have seen in a loss this year that we didn't get. And then the turnaround supplement, while there is funding for the turnaround supplement that's in the budget for next year of 843,000, we currently do not have any turnaround schools. The state put it in our location as like a holding spot for the actual turnaround schools when they're determined statewide. We did contact them, and as of right now, they don't have any of our schools listed as turnaround, so that will actually be reduced out of our calculation. So now, where I'm going to talk to you about the challenges that we're having, that we're going to have, and why we have such a big increase. As you all know, the federal government has been talking about a minimum $15 an hour. The state mandated that all school districts must get to the $15 an hour by October 1st of 2022. So in order to do that, they provided additional funding for districts to give their employees up to that $15 an hour. So we will be working towards getting our individuals up to $15 an hour. And as you know, that probably is going to cause some compression issues that we need to look at as well. We have the Family Empowerment scholarships, and we've had some long discussions about that. This year, we paid over $20 million between our Family Empowerment and our McKay. Next year, McKay will go into Family Empowerment. It will be one big lump sum of money, and we do estimate that that will go well over the 20 million, so we have to pull money for that, and that is part of that $63 million that will have to be pulled. We also have an increase in retirement rates. Based on our student, our current employees, we're looking at about $5.3 million increase in our retirement rates that we're going to have to come up with. And we're also looking at doing some additional benefits for our employees. And by the way, that retirement rate was for general fund only, so that doesn't, that 5.3 does not cover food service, anybody paid from one of our grants or any of those. That was general fund only. So where are we focusing our resources? So we're focusing them on the classroom. That is our priority. We're focusing on the whole child. We're looking at the mental wellness. We're looking at our English learners. We're looking at students in need of additional interventions and supports, and we're trying to recapture the learning loss that our students got through the COVID. And then we're focusing on employee retention. So we move on to our debt service. We're looking, we're estimating that it's going to be at about $117 million, and that is all dependent on the COPS that we get and the repayment terms that we have for those certificates of participation. Our capital funds, we're estimating them to be at about $997 million. That includes about $305 million in COPS. We're looking at an increase in our capital millage tax of about $184,000 is what our total would be, 184 million, sorry. Our sales tax, we estimating, estimate to come in about $108 million, and our impact fees at about $34 million. And as you know, these are nice increases in our revenue. However, as you all know, our expenditures are going up with all of the building costs and everything that are going up as well. So it's going to help us with the increased costs for sure. Our food services estimated at about $74 million. That's about a $6.8 million increase over FY '22. Our focus here is on feeding all of our students, and our CEP program continues for all schools next year. Our internal service funds is estimated, this is our health insurance and our, this is all of our self-insured items. We're looking at about $165 million, which is a $9 million increase over FY '22. We're looking at increased health insurance contributions and an estimated, we estimate there will be an increase in our fund balance in this one as well. So this next slide has, and I just want to point out, these are all estimates. They will be changing. These are all based on, you know, they will change with our final numbers that are coming in for this year, and we're still doing all of our final payouts. So it'll be a while before we come up with our actual final numbers for this year, which have an effect on next year. Our tax roll came in really nice this year. So in FY '22, our tax roll was $104 billion. And at the conference report or the first calculation, they came in at $115 billion for Lee County. And we just received our preliminary report from the property appraiser, and they're actually estimating us to be at about $128 billion, which is a nice, big increase. However, as you know, our required local effort does not change. So the funding for, from our, from the FEFP portion stays the same. They just adjust the state allocation so that all counties in Florida receive the same amount of dollars. They keep it equitable. However, we do see an increase in our discretionary millage. And if you look at the conference report with the first calculation, they were looking at $83 million from that. We're now looking at about $92 million. So there's a $9 million increase from the increase in the property taxes. And then our capital outlay, the original would have generated $166 million, and the new one generates $184 million. And we used that in our projections for the capital funds at this point, which is an $18 million increase, which is really going to help us with all of those increased expenses for capital. So we still have a lot of work to be, to be done. We need to determine our overall student growth and the impact of that. We need to make some final decisions on our priorities within all of our funding sources. We need to review our compensation and benefits for our employees, and we need to finalize all of our fund balance, fund balances, our revenues, and our expense estimates. So the timeline that we're looking at is July 19th is the date that the state will do their certification for our second calculation, which is the one that we will actually be providing to you in our July meeting. July 21st, we will be providing the documents to you all that we will be advertising on. We will do our advertising in the news press on the 22nd. Those are all set by TRIM. I don't have any wiggle room in there, so that will be in TRIM, will be advertising in the news press. And then on July 26th, we'll have our first tentative budget hearing. And then on September 7th, we'll have our final budget hearing on the FY '23 budget. This time, I'll open it up to any, the superintendent and the board discussions.
This time, we'd love to hear your discussion related to the facts and figures that both Kelly and Amy have presented. Thank you very much for the work that's gone into this presentation and the work that remains to set up the new budget, as well as finalize and finish out the actuals from this past fiscal year. So thanks for all your help and effort.
Ms. Jordan.
Thank you.
Thank you for this presentation. My question is on the food service. So focus on feeding all students, that is something that we do all the time, though.
Kurt, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that.
Yes, we do. We just want to continue that focus so that all of our students can get fed, and we are trying to feed them breakfast, lunch, and in some cases, dinner as well.
Okay, thank you. And then can you say what CEP continues for all students? Because for your average person, what does CEP mean?
Yeah, thank you. I usually get that wrong, so I'm going to let Amy say what that, thank you.
That is, CEP is Community Eligibility Program, and that is the program, whereas at this point, we don't have students that are necessarily qualified for free or reduced lunch through CEP, depending on what your poverty statistics are across the district. You can have schools that are just categorized as every student eats for no additional charge to, direct charge to the student. And so our Community Eligibility Program qualification tells us that again, for next year, we can have each of our schools qualify for all students eat, breakfast, lunch, no additional charge to the student.
Thank you. I just thought it was really important for people to understand what that stood for. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Ms. Morgan?
So we've talked about this Family Empowerment scholarship that was clawed back. Is there any update to that in terms of what you have learned about our particular situation and what is happening at the state level?
So after we had our discussion at the last meeting, the very next day, I got a phone call from the third-party person that the state uses, and she was asking about it, so she had heard, and so she was asking. So of course, I can't, she asked me to send her the student information. I could not send her the student information, so I told her that I would send it to the state, and she could work with the state. So I did provide the state with the list of students and what the issues were. Last Friday, I received information back from the state that they have reviewed the list, that we will be receiving our funding back for the students that were in our traditional schools being served, and that they have set up additional checks and balances for the double reporting that was occurring for other areas where they were reporting the student in both FES programs or in one McKay program and then FES. So they have set up additional checks and balances so that those items will not occur.
Fantastic. Good for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Jordan?
Do we know what those funds are?
It's about $600,000 to Lee County that we'll be seeing back.
Thank you. Thank you for.
And they said we should see those in our fifth calculation, which will come out in the middle of next year, so.
Any other questions? I have one. On Slide six, the capital current estimated dollars, where it says capital millage, sales tax, and impact fees, they're in parentheses. Is that a decrease or?
No, I'm sorry. I usually do put decreases in a parenthesis, so I apologize for that. No, that was just the estimated amount right now.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you so much for that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much for this presentation.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you. Oh, Ms. Jevonelli?
Welcome. Dr. Desmore, back. It's good to see you.
Thank you. Really good to see you as well. Thank you very much. And for all the thoughts and prayers and cards while I was gone, to you all, I very much thank you. Every single one of them was much needed, so thank you.
Yes, it's good to have you back. Okay, next on the agenda is Position Reclass Job Description. And presenting, we have Scott Rickenbacker and Will Rothenberg, Director of Compensation Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Banier, Scott Rickenbacker, Director of Construction Projects Management.
I'm Will Rothenberg, Director of Compensation and Labor Relations.
So I come before you, this has been a long process for, for me, about a two-and-a-half-year process, where I've been trying to repurpose a project manager as an assistant director to have a succession plan within my, my department. The volume of work we've done has become exponentially increased due to the tax referendum. The numbers you see in the tax referendum always seem to show 25 million, but many of my projects in their standalone are 98 million, 60 million, and so forth. So we've quite a big load of work that we do annually. This particular project manager would still carry some project management duties, high-profile jobs, but also this project manager has been a tutor to the newest of our project managers in our departments. Currently, this project manager is always providing a secondary oversight on my behalf. Part of my job should be quality control, QAQC, we call it, where I should be able to tour at the project sites. Due to the volume, sheer volume of work and meetings, I collaborate, I'm not in a silo, so I collaborate with other departments, legal, procurement, academic, as well as all of the committees we put together when we're developing and creating the job design. So I need some support. The two previous superintendents, Dr. Atkins and also Dr. Savage, are aware of this, this request, as is Dr. Banier. All three have been very supportive of this. The reason it hasn't moved forward sooner is we just have had attrition of executive-level staff. And in our district, if you don't have a champion at a much higher level to push it forward, I can never assume that the superintendents by themselves, you know, when they give a directive or an action, but we've just had so much transition, especially within the Operations Department, Human Resources, and also in the Budget and Finance Department, there have been some delays. So everybody's on board with, with the, the concept. I can tell you, I burned the candle at 150 miles per hour. The individual that I have in mind, when my appendix had ruptured and I was out for a month, stepped up to the plate, managed all of our day-to-day businesses, and conducted our, our work without missing a beat or having any false reports. I entered a drop program as of July 1, so the five-year time clock begins, and what I'm trying to do is set a precedence for succession plan so that when I am gone, you have some of that as fully knowledgeable in everything that we do. It takes years to understand everything we do in the processes. A large part of my work, everything, every piece of paper we do goes forward to the superintendent and ultimately to the board for approval. So I have become a, a paperwork reviewer for multiple departments going forward, just to ensure that the paperwork is correct. So again, I'm looking for support. This person has been actually doing the job for about two years for me in helping to make my department a success and ultimately the success for the district. And now is the time, we've been able to bring it forward to you, and this is the position we're requesting that you, you approve at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Rickenbacker. Ms. Gittens?
Good afternoon, everyone. And there must be something in the policies or procedures, I talked to the attorney about it, that we all have to sign in blood that you can get and drop, and I know I haven't, so. In other words, you can't go.
Well.
No, just teasing you. You are such a vital part of, of the organization, and any help that we can give you for all the work that you do, I, I just think it's a no-brainer.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Jevonelli?
So there used to be two of you, right?
No, no, there's, now I'm giving away my age. Back in the day, there were us. Right now, my department, there, I'm a department of eight, me being the eighth person. We have continued to manage. We got a bookkeeper, that was my big, since I've tenured in that department, that was my big hire, to help with the DMP and all the invoices, ton of paperwork. And we've, we've all given 150% every single day. I'm just, the candle, it's difficult, and I find myself engaged in more and more meetings and, and more collaboration with other departments, and I need, to give you that quality, I need to know that I have a person who has authority, signature authority under my behalf, that in my absence, that they can run the ship, and also as an arm to ensure that the policies and procedures and the expectations of we as a school district are being met out in the field.
Thank you. My question is actually for the superintendent. So the path, when he retires, obviously would be the, for the, for the new director to step in his, his position. Would you fill the, this position again, because that would leave this assistant director open at that point in time? And we're looking at five years, but I mean, would that be the, the plan or the pathway for this? Because it's kind of that way now, so. Okay, go ahead.
So Madam, Madam, Scott?
Okay, sir. I'll go after you.
Madam Chair, that's one, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, Board Member Jevonelli, that's one particular pathway, was the assistant director would become the director. With all vacant positions, we will advertise the vacancy. We will seek to find the best qualified candidates, whether that be an internal person or external person. But clearly, under, I believe Scott's only ever been one person, but he, he sometimes acts like two, because he's just about everywhere. But that would be one possible connection to build that bench strength so that even if a new director was selected, there'd be the historical institutional knowledge necessary to keep the organization functioning.
I understand that the question you had asked, Ms. Jevonelli. I think time will tell in the future. If you've, if the district is successful in, in beating the sunshine for the tax referendum and it continues, it would be assumed that the same volume of work would continue. If it should not be, well, then that's a different discussion to look at at that moment in time.
True. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
I just wanted to say, I think it's overdue, so no, no questions from me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn and Ms. Gittens?
Okay, I'm looking at the minimum qualifications, and I just needed a little bit of clarification on this. Bachelor's degree in architecture or engineering, okay, so that's pretty clear-cut, but then and/or related experience. So I'm, I'm just want, you know, I know you have somebody in mind, and of course, that's not a given, because we do have to advertise and, and all of that, but things, things happen, people move and, and all of that. So I just wanted some clarification on related experience. Does that segue down to 10 years of related experience? I mean, the two are?
Well, I'll probably get myself in trouble here. You all know what I think about architects and construction managers, so I don't need to say anymore about that. You're not going to find anybody with those professional licenses that can come at our salary rate.
Well, that's what I wondered.
I have a bachelor of science in air and local sciences. I have a bachelor of science in air and civil sciences and engineering. I'm a licensed commercial pilot, and here I am.
Okay.
My job in my department, it's what you learn over time in doing the work, starting as a grunt at the bottom, what we call a project engineer, clerk of the works, folding blueprints and moving up through the chain, superintendent, assistant superintendent, area project manager, regional superintendent, executive. It's something that you attain over about 15 to 20 years of experience. The person that I have in mind for this has been here almost 30 years. This person was involved in pretty much all of the property acquisition for the district back in the early 2000s. This person has run all of your large, largest capital project schools. I think you all know who I'm talking about without me mentioning a name. So this is a person I would choose that has supported me, even in the face of adversity and the changes, not being able to get this additional scope in there. And I think you'll be very much satisfied with who it is and the abilities that that person brings to the district to continue the work of my specific department and the work of the district.
And just to clarify what I'm asking, I'm sure, and I don't know who it is, but I'm sure the individual is excellent. But I was just looking at that particular, the bachelor's degree, architecture, engineering, that kind of threw me off because I had the same thought about, you know, somebody becoming an architect. It's going to pay more money, probably. And then the end of that bullet says, "and/or related experience," but then the next bullet says, and to me, this would be, from a construction point of view, 10 years of related experience in facility, that to me, and it sounds like to you as well, is the real heart of what in this person you're talking about, or should that person be unavailable for any reason, whoever else we look for? So I'm, because, I don't know, just the way it's written there, and I think Will has an answer.
I think just to highlight, generally with the minimum qualifications, I think the board policy says that some of these things will be generically descriptive, which is a good way of saying that it shouldn't box you in, which I think is what you're saying. When you have specific degree requirements, you know, the district would be open to considering qualified candidates with other degrees. Sometimes the names of degrees change also, where one thing might be computer science and then it becomes, you know, a cybersecurity-type thing. The other thing, and this is part of a bigger project that we're working on now with job descriptions, is separating out in the minimum qualifications, the required qualifications and the preferred qualifications, because there are some places where legally there's a requirement that you have a CDL versus this is an organizational value or priority or preference. And so we want to make sure that for HR standpoint, that we're able to clearly separate those, since some of that screening goes on through staffing and talent management, and some of that screening goes on through the interview process and the selection of candidates for interviews and skills assessment and that sort of thing. So that's a broader topic that I think we're also trying to delve into and clarify for people.
Okay. So to get back to, I guess, the heart of my question, Scott, would you say that, looking at minimum qualifications, the experience, related experience, especially facilities, construction, et cetera, would be you, as an expert in the field, would probably trump the idea of?
Absolutely, without question. And the example I might give you is if I had the ability to get someone that had those types of educational credentials, I'm now tutoring a new individual.
Okay, yeah.
And that can take some time, up to two years, to get them to understand the processes. And this is a way to not miss a beat, to have a succession plan. In the event that something happens to me, the department carries on and the work of the district carries on.
And I think that's great with the succession plan. I'm just wondering if those minimum qualifications, the way it's written now, might need a little tweaking, because again, you never, you never know what.
I think overall that the experience, knowledge base trumps the educational, so I think you're good, but you leave the door open in the future, five, 10 years down the road, that you have that in there, should you choose to go that way.
Okay.
So Madam Chair, can I ask a clarifying, can I make a clarifying statement? I appreciate Scott's expertise in this area and what he's describing, but we need to be very careful that all of these qualifications are minimum qualifications, and that when this position is advertised for selection, that that advertisement will be open to all candidates, both internal and external. All candidates will be reviewed, and then a selection will be made from those candidates who pass through the screening. We have to be very careful about promising or a potential promise at the dais of employment to any specific individual. As a publicly hiring organization, we are potentially excited about some internal candidates applying for this position, and we'd be thrilled to see their name on our list. But Scott and the Human Resources Department will make sure that we follow the legality of the procedures in making the selection.
Dr. Benear, I believe the intent, we were going to do a reclassification on this one. The intent was to take the funding from the existing project management position and add to that position and do a reclassification in this instance. Now, that may not follow procedure, but the board and the superintendent have the ability to move forward with that if they so choose. And I believe that's how we're coming forward. If you would like to go the other route, we certainly can do that.
If it's not, I understood it as a job description change and that we were putting it on the street. The way you've explained it to me now, that it would be a reclassification of an already existing position that someone already has, I think that's a little different than I was reading it. And if I was mistaken and the rest of the board was seeing it the same way you're describing it, then I apologize and withdraw my comment. But I wanted to be sure the board was aware, if that's the case, that we're not talking about just a job description. We're talking about the reclassification of an existing position now that exists, adding duties to an individual who is already in a position that will now assume this role. That's different than the way, I think, originally was interpreted at the dais.
And that position, the project management position, will not be added for a new one. This person will continue to do some project management work, as addition to taking the additional responsibilities as senior administrator.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Rickenbacker, I want to thank you for being diligent for the past two and a half years in planning for succession, because I think that's extremely important in this organization, and we need more of it.
Yes.
Thank you.
I agree with that.
And I apologize initially, Dr. Benear, if that was not correctly stated or in the writing, but that was the intent.
We can talk.
Yes, sir.
Not a time, but we're fine. I mean, I just, the way it was described and the way I heard it and the way you and I had an offline conversation regarding the presentation, I saw a discrepancy, and I thought we were going down a job description change. But we are clearly a reclassification of an existing position.
Correct. This is the first step with a job description, since it didn't exist in my department, had to occur. So you're approving the job description. The second part would then be in the budget phase, where that reclassification of the budget dollars would support that.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay. So before this comes to us, all of this, or not all of it, but the slight murkiness here will be clarified, I'm assuming.
Madam Chair? Just to clarify, I don't think it's murky, except that your superintendent made it murky.
Oh, okay, okay.
When Scott originally, when Scott and I had an original conversation about a particular position that he wanted to grow and develop, it was a reclassification. When this initially got presented today, it was specifically about a change to a job description, and I either missed, or it wasn't stated, that this was in the intent, the job description needed to be revised, so that the reclassification of a current employee's job can be made to assume these responsibilities. So this is not a job that will go out, if you will, on the street to be advertised. It is a reclassification of an employee's responsibilities that were, as it relates in Scott's department. The first step is to bring this change to the job description, then the reclassification can occur through normal administrative procedures.
Okay. And I pulled murky out of the air, and it kind of has bad connotation, maybe confusion or, yeah, I didn't. So I didn't mean like somebody's doing something underhanded in that way. But I, Dr. Benear, I was kind of understanding the way you were talking, and that's what was confusing me. But I get it. I get it now. So it'll all be crystal clear when it comes to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Ms. Vaughn? Okay. Well, thank you very much for that presentation. I think it's as clear as it's going to be right now. And we appreciate you coming and doing the presentation.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is public comment. Attorney Dupree Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My last, my last check, there was no public comment. So there's no public comment at today's briefing.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who did not fill out a blue card, who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on now to board member comments and reports. And we will begin with Ms. Jordan.
Oh, you will? I really don't, um, thank you, Ms. Fisher, and I really don't have much to speak about. I, I know that we are, I want to make sure that we understand that we are looking, currently still looking for replacement for Capital Strategy. And I know Dr. Benear has had some conversation, and maybe he will share that with us today, so that way everybody's just a little bit aware of what we're looking at. I mean, we did mention at the last meeting about bringing somebody in that would be here on-premise, that would work with us. But we also are looking at other avenues, because we do need to have someone, especially with our legislative priorities coming in and trying to be prepared for the legislation, the session. We just need to really be on top of that. And if I may ask Dr. Benear to just mention that, he can do it now, Ms. Fisher, or when he speaks?
Dr. Benear?
Yes, ma'am. Board members, as you know, we have lost the services of Capital Strategies, which has been supportive of you and your stance in Tallahassee for at least a few years now. They have chosen to sever their relationship beginning July 1, which puts us in a bit of a bind moving forward. We know that on the board meeting tonight, we have the agenda items to approve the job description for a chief of communications slash government relations position. That position, as I will share with the public, will be a position that we will be patient in terms of finding, because of the current political environment to find an individual like that. I'll just be brief in saying that most staff for congressional and other elected officials that are currently running for election are no longer in a staff position. They are currently in a campaign manager position. Depending on how those elections turn out, those individuals may or may not be available at the end of the primary season, or certainly at the end of the November election. So that's the best time for us to be looking for a chief of communications and government relations officer. So we're going to be patient. In the meantime, we also know that we need some help and support now. There are some individuals that are available to us. I've checked with at least two organizations. I'm working on a third, because I think it's important to get at least, have at least three conversations. But there is a current organization that has responded that I believe would be a good choice for us to consider. You know, I don't want to get in the way of what I think is a fair and transparent process. I've not received three quotes, but there is an organization that you are familiar with. They've done some work with Florida School Boards Association. They've done some presentations there. And I know these, I know the person in particular and the other attorneys that they work with to be one of the best organizations in the state to do some lobbying on our behalf. I'm trying to stop short of actually delivering a name until we've had time to consider what's required. What's required is we could immediately announce that this is like who we'd like to go with, because we do not have a requirement, because it's a services contract to go out for competitive bid. However, I do think even like with your books, as a former principal, I always tried to get three different organizations to bid so that we could be clear, not necessarily bid, but to offer their pricing, so that we'd be clear on a selection and as to why. I don't always think the cheapest is always the best. Capital Strategies was not an inexpensive item for this board, but I do think there are some other individuals within the state that deserve the opportunity, in our request, either turn in information as to what they would like to do and what the cost of their services would be, before making a one-on-one with each one of you, to run some of those names by you and then make a final decision. But I do believe the chair, Madam Chair, is correct for our board, that our decision probably needs to be sooner rather than later, because this legislative session will be on top of us before we know it. I can't believe it's July. I know it's not. I know the actual date, but it sure feels like August. And I know, I mean, it's going to come very, very fast.
Thank you, Dr. Benear. And then some of the ones that he has been speaking with do actually have experience with school boards, which I think is really important, because they do know our issues that we have. And then, of course, the relationships that they would have up in Tallahassee would be extraordinary for us, and that's something that we are definitely in dire need of, making sure we have that right connection. And then going along with, you know, the other person that would be our on-hand person locally in the district. As far as, I mean, that was really the only thing that I've had. We've all been, you know, summer's here, but we're still, you know, busy out there in the community, making sure that, talking to the constituents, trying to help parents, because, you know, they're still trying to figure out where their kids are going to go for school, what, do their kids have a bus that's going to pick them up? And I will tell you that the, our staff is working very hard to make sure that they're accommodating the families and that our kids are getting to the schools and being served lunches and meals. And I just, I really have to thank you all for what you're doing. And that's all that I have, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Givinelli?
I don't really have anything. I said, I said some, my piece yesterday. I really don't have anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
I just want to make two comments about, from the board weekly report. First of all, I want to compliment Student Services on their report. I thought they did a terrific job outlining what they've done and where they're going. And I appreciated that. And I also want to compliment the JROTC program for their current assignment, I think it's in Atlanta, but they're checking out a program that they intend to bring back here, which will expand the opportunities for our kids in JROTC. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Vaughn?
I'm kind of like, the rest, not that we haven't been doing anything, but nothing really huge to report on. I'm looking at my watch and thinking, oh, we have, it's like we have all this time. If we weren't constrained by agendas, I'd say, hey, let's take this topic we haven't gotten to and put it in, let's put it in right here. But unfortunately, we can't do that, so.
Well, we can do that for the good of the order.
Okay. Now she's going, no. No, I think we've just been kind of keeping a watchful eye on things, because this is shaping up to be one heck of a political year with all the things that are going on. And so I think it'll be a bumpy ride. So that's really all I have to say at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Gittens?
Thanks, Ms. Vaughn.
Well, I'm.
For the vote of confidence.
For the vote of confidence.
Speaking the truth, it's a bumpy ride already.
I know, thank you.
I'm seeing a nod around there, yes, it is.
Okay, I do have a couple of things, and one, excuse me, a report from the Value Added Board, we met last week, and the only real changes that, we voted to increase the stipend for the judges that do the, the hearings, and so I asked the question, I said, you know, I don't represent the entire board, so if it's a matter of us saying that we have to pay more money, but I was told that, no, it's, it's kind of a given, you know, that the, the board pays their part and the county pays, pays their part, so I'm just to inform that, I think our portion was, was not that much, the increase was just a small amount, so it will be in the notes and the minutes from the Value Added Board, but it is something that has been long needed, and one of the reasons that they did it, these judges will come sometimes thinking they're having cases, and they get there and people don't show up, so they have given up, you know, a half a day or a day of their time and, and their livelihood to come, so it was something that it was unanimously agreed that, that they should get this increase. Not anything else really, you know, unless you want to get into all that, like I said, you can look at the minutes from that. I have a couple of other things, and one of them is the Audit Committee, and I want to, I will read this to you. We met last week and I want to make sure I cover it, so hold on for me one quick second. Okay, just to make sure that I'm, I'm clear on it, I'm going to read the, the notes, not the notes, but the overview of what happened in our June 21st meeting. So the Audit Committee met with RSM, and the purpose was to look at the direction that RSM is going to take, you know, prioritizing their, their work. So, RSM was present at the meeting and advised the committee that the field work for the information technology audit, and I'll send, share this with you guys as well, but the information, the technology audit, has been completed and a draft report is ready to be discussed with the superintendent and staff. The report is slated to be presented on August 3rd, 2022, to the Audit Committee. RSM also stated that they are in the process of completing their field work related to the following testing of findings noted during the facility construction audit, the purchase and procurement compliance audit, and the HR recruitment and onboarding audit. The report is slated to be presented on August 3rd to the Audit Committee. RSM discussed in detail their rationale for determining the top audit areas, I believe, I think they were like 10, as identified in their risk assessment. The committee members posed questions to RSM regarding scope, risk, sample sizes, testing, and ranking of audits. The committee determined that they wish to meet on July 5th, and that meeting is already scheduled, to discuss the audit plan in detail and make the recommendation to the board regarding suggested audits to be performed. And I just want to take a second to say, this Audit Committee is made up of people that are experts in their field, and they really get into the details and, and asking all of the questions that we would not even have the purview to ask regarding our RSM audits. So I would, you know, say very confidently that we are in very good hands with this Audit Committee and their work that they do with RSM. So on July 5th, we'll be meeting, and they will be discussing next steps as far as talking to RSM. And also, I think I mentioned to the superintendent about if he could be at the next meeting because they had a few questions for you, and Attorney Bruno, through the chair, if there's anything that you think, you know, I may have left out, what is the, the follow-up process after we meet on July 5th and then getting back with RSM? And I believe there's some guidelines that have to be taken care of before it all comes to the board, is that correct?
Thank you, through the chair. Ms. Gittens, you're absolutely correct, and your report is exactly what was discussed during the meeting. The only thing that I would add is after the Audit Committee meets and picks the recommendations for the audit, then it needs to come back to the board and provide that recommendation to the school board for the school board to discuss, and then make the final decision as to what areas that the school board wants to move forward with the audit.
Right, okay. Are there any questions from anybody regarding the process and what's going on?
I just, a question, who wants to speak to the superintendent? The Audit Committee or RSM? When you just said come to the next meeting?
No, there were some questions and things that were discussed at the meeting, and I suggested that we have the superintendent there to follow up on those questions, and so they asked as a committee if he could be at the next meeting.
But is it they, is that the Audit Committee?
RSM is not asking to speak to the superintendent, it's, it's the committee.
And for the board's recollection, the superintendent is a
Right.
... member, not a voting member, but a member of that committee.
Right, and he had a conflicting appointment, he had to be somewhere else and therefore he wasn't there, but in the conversation, some of the things that came up, he could and should be the one to answer that, so that's why.
And I'm just asking because I just wanted to know who they were that wanted to ask the questions, because the Audit Committee is the committee of the board, as well as RSM is, is our, they work for the board as well, so that's why I was wondering who was asking to have conversation. Okay, that's the only reason.
Attorney Bruno?
Perhaps I can just clarify a little bit what Ms. Gittens is referring to. As the board auditor, RSM is presenting to the Audit Committees, Audit Committee, sometimes questions come up in terms of why you have this recommendation, or what is the process within the administration for this or that, so those are the types of questions, just to help clarify, and for the Audit Committee to be able to completely understand the administrative process on certain things so that they can make the recommendation, so they may have had some questions, I, I know that they had questions for our internal auditor who answered some questions, they probably had some questions for the superintendent as well that he would know because this is an administrative process, those are the types of things. So it is within their purview to ask, it's not abnormal, especially since the superintendent is a member of that committee, non-voting member.
Okay, and then my other question, if I may?
Yes, please.
If RSM is, they have completed, they used to send us those reports when they were going through the process, we've not received one report from RSM to date since they've been back on.
And that is what is being worked out at this point, the, the process in RSM working with the Audit Committee is, it's interesting you say that, because one of the questions was about what do we want to see, what do those reports look like? And I, one of, a couple of the members brought up the fact that they had looked at the previous reports, and they felt that they were lacking in some areas, they were fine in others, but that's what's being worked on right now. They are, are ironing out what they're going to be doing, how the reports should look, what information the committee feels we should get to answer any questions that we may have. So, previous reports are probably going to be revised, but that's what they're working on. Someone mentioned, I think it was the Chair, said, you know, we need to look at, what, what do we want to get back from you as you're going through this process? And the information we got back, because we're at, you know, this level, is one thing, but the information that the Audit Committee, who are the, the experts, may be at a higher level or may be mixed, but that's what they're working on. And no, they're not, it's not that we've missed a report, I know we haven't gotten anything yet because it's all in the planning stages, they're still looking at the list and prioritizing who's going to be audited first.
Continue, Ms. Jordan.
And I'll be real quick with my, I'm just a little bit confused because if, when I hear that they're, they've completed, and then I hear, just now, I just heard again, that the Audit Committee is deciding what we should get or not get, unless I just misunderstood that, that's an issue, because we should be telling them what we want. They work for us, they're, they, they're part of, an extension of us, they're not deciding, well, I don't think they need this, or I don't think they need to have that, we need to be abreast of what is going on, and that was a whole thing before, us not having that information in a timely manner, and I know that when we did speak with them, we were, there was nothing that stated that we were not going to receive reports, because I was a part of that in the beginning, so it's, I don't know where that came, that we are not receiving this until it's completed and the Audit Committee decides what we should or should not receive. That's all I have to say.
That, that is not the case, okay? They're not deciding what we are going to see, what they are trying to do is to work with RSM to ensure that the information we get is relevant and pertains to what it is we need to know. They are not acting and keeping anything from us, and RSM is not, not doing something because the Audit Committee told them not to, that is, they know very well what their place is in this process. I think the Attorney Bruno had a comment.
The only thing I was going to say is just to make sure that the board is clear in terms of everybody's role, so RSM works for the board, it is the board's auditor, and pursuant to Board Policy 1.71, the Audit Committee works for the board as well, but because of their expertise, they filter some of the information to be able to come back to the board with some specific recommendations. So the three things that they're supposed to do is help the board find their board auditor, is to help create an annual audit plan by advising the board, the board is the ultimate decision-maker in that, as well as provide guidance because of their expertise to the board. So RSM does not work for the Audit Committee, it works for the board, and the board will and should be able to get those reports from RSM as well at some point when it has been finalized by RSM.
Thank you, because what I'm hearing, we're here and they're here, that I have an issue with us being here, we need to be aware of what's going on.
Okay, and
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
I share Ms. Jordan's concern, I mean, I think in, our employee has an obligation to provide work product to us, and certainly before they're providing it to another committee that is advising us. Yeah, I, I understand what was said about the Audit Committee sort of trying to clean up what it is that comes to us, nevertheless, we've hired them, they're working for us, and we have seen nothing since signing the contract, and I think it's incumbent upon them to provide information to us about what they're doing and how they're working with the Audit Committee. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn, then Ms. Gittens?
Okay, and I'm going to echo some things my board colleagues have just said, I'm going to start with saying that I'm feeling a lot of discomfort right now on, on what I'm hearing about the Audit Committee. Yes, they are all experts, but they're our board committee, and I respect what Ms. Morgan just said about RSM, but if the Audit Committee were all that on top of things, the Audit Committee, to me then, should have been directing RSM, we think it's time for these reports to go out to the board, because that was actually before Ms. Jordan said it, was something I was going to ask, the, the reports, the little timeline things, and, you know, we could have gotten something, we decided this with the Audit Committee, we're doing this, we're reporting to the board on, on that date. And the other thing that makes me really uncomfortable with the Audit Committee is, frankly, the first time that they gave a report, I felt less like they were giving us a recommendation that we could discuss, and maybe I just saw a look or two, but this is how I felt, that it was less a recommendation than almost an edict, like, we're the experts, we know what you need, and it's, it's our committee. I feel like right now, I need, I don't know how many hours I've missed watching, but I feel like before I, as a board member, make any kind of decisions, I need to watch every single minute of what has transpired, because I want to go into when we get a report, into knowing what was discussed, and what were the things that the committee was saying to RSM, no, or, I, I'm, I'm just, and it's not a reflection on our board liaison, it's just a reflection on, this is a new, this is a brand-new committee, we're going down a different road with this, and I personally feel extremely uncomfortable, almost to the point that I feel that the group is, is usurping some of the things that we do as board members. So that's my comment.
Ms. Gittens?
I, I just really don't know what to say, I mean, nothing is being withheld, nothing is being done without the board, decisions are not being made like that, and if anything, if you do watch the meetings or, or see the comments, I have felt that the members on that committee have been so much of a watchdog for this district, more so than trying to do something that they personally want. They are asking questions through their expertise, and I'm sorry if you thought I felt, you know, said, we're down here and they're up there, I'm just, I was talking about expertise, I was not talking about running the audit function. They are asking questions and doing things on behalf of the community, they're asking questions, well, what about this and what about that? No decisions are being made without the board being included. So I, I, you know, what really concerns me is this is the path we went down when we were without a board auditor for almost over a year, and I hear the same tones coming up. If, if that's the case, we, we need to move past it, we decided as a board, this was the process we were going to do, and if this is the process, we need to try to let the process work through and not say, well, this isn't working. I really, I don't know.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Morgan?
So what I'm hearing the board say is there's, there's a lack of clarity about what RSM is doing and a little bit of concern, I think the board should direct the board chair to contact RSM and ask RSM to prepare a report for the board on, you know, where they stand with respect to the audits and the nature of their working relationship with the Audit Committee, I think we're entitled to that.
Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Gittens, then Ms. Jordan? Ms. Gittens, then Ms. Jordan.
I mean, this is, I just got an email too from the chair of the audit committee, and he is requesting to come and to appear before the group at the next meeting to maybe clarify some of the questions that you have. And I think that we would at least owe that to the committee. If, if we're going to jump in as a board and say, oh, they're not doing their job, but we have given the responsibility to work with the audit committee, I, I think that we're doing them a disservice. They're volunteers that we've asked to help us sort through this, and I think that the least we could do is to give them that opportunity. So before we vote on and change things and make things all different, my suggestion is that we listen and find out from the audit committee what is happening.
Madam Chair, there's two proposals that I heard on the table. One of them was from Ms. Morgan with regards to giving the chair direction to contact RSM to provide some type of feedback, and then there's another proposal by Ms. Gittens to have the audit committee chair come in and give a report to the board in terms of what is going on. So those are two things that are on the table at this time.
Okay, so then, we'll, can you just hold on, Ms. Jordan? Okay. So then, Ms. Morgan has proposed that we direct Ms. Jordan to contact RSM and ask for a report. And, and I, I would support that, because I think that we need to know where they are when, just like we do with the, with the board attorney. We know what she's doing when, and we're abreast of what's happening, and, and I, I support that. So should we take a consensus, or?
Can we have discussion on that, please?
Yeah, yes, I was just checking with the board attorney about the consensus.
So because of the difference in opinion on this, if the board wants to move forward and take a consensus, you can, or you can just have every board member verbally state their position, or whether or not they agree with the proposal to direct the chair to do that. So I would prefer that we have that going down the line discussion versus a consensus, because we're trying to move away from consensus.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. So we've heard Ms. Morgan's proposal. Ms. Jordan, what's your position?
Well, if I may, I, I want to make sure that, to clarify, that nobody is, I certainly am not saying that the audit committee is not qualified, they're not the, that they're not experts at what they do in their field, but I do believe in even the comments, and I think maybe it's because we're not understanding, they, when I hear that you're completed something, where is that, where is any of the work that has been done? When I hear that, how are, they're getting the information on what we want, how are they getting that information on what we want? We've not really had a conversation with the audit committee, and if Ms. Gittens is taking that to them, what is, what is being taken to them from us?
Right, okay.
So I think we need to have something to show that what has been done thus far.
Okay, let me clarify. Ms. Morgan, were you proposing that the, the chair of the school board contact RSM for a report, a current report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that was that. Um, Ms. Vaughn?
I, I agree that we need a report from RSM, however, I think it should be merged with a report from this committee, that the committee should either integrate the reports or, you know, some, somehow say, the committee will say, by this date, we focused on five or 10 different priorities. On this date, we're going to work out our top priorities with reasons to present to the board. And then, in tandem with that, RSM says, on this date, you know, there should be things that are identical from what RSM did with the advisory committee, but then there should be other things where they're saying, did this report, did this for the advisory committee, will, on this date, we'll be reporting directly to board, or, or something like that, a way that they're either in, in tandem, merged, or two separate but parallel reports, is what I would like to see.
Okay, so you'd like a report from RSM?
Both.
And from the audit committee? Okay, thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Well, first of all, it just seems odd to me that if, I'm already the liaison of the committee and, and sitting there with RSM and, and the audit committee, why wouldn't you say to me, as the liaison, to make sure that we have information? Why would it be taken from me and given to the chair to go to the committee? But anyway, I, I do think, so as not to slight anyone or to have any issues, that this just came up, and that we should be able to say to the audit committee, this is the information that we feel we haven't gotten. Nothing has been completed. There is no, there's, there's no audit that's been all done and we haven't gotten information about it. I, I don't understand where that's coming from.
You stated it was completed.
Maybe I said it incorrectly, Ms. Jordan, I apologize, and I retract it if I gave you the impression that something has been done that this board does not know about and has not been informed. It is not. It is not. So I just, I'm just saying, I think to be equitable and do the right thing for the committee and RSM as the liaison, just ask me to go back and tell them that this is what we want. I, I don't understand why we're making it such a big.
Since it was Mrs. Morgan's proposal, I'm going to go back to Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. We have two entities reporting to us. One is an employee. They, we need to make clear to that employee what our expectations are. The other is an advisory committee to the board. It's not their role to screen and filter or whatever, and, and we need to hear from them about what they feel their, their, you know, our priorities ought to be. I don't think at this point, until we have a sense of what kind of work both entities are doing, we should try to merge these two reporting bodies. I think we need to keep them separate. That's my comment.
Thank you very much. Ms. Giovinelli?
Okay, so I happened to get an update from my, the person that I picked, and I actually spoke to him actually last night, and he told me that there's, they're going through what the recommend, the list that we all met, that's where they're at, where we, we all met individually with RSM, and RSM has given them the list, they've talked about it, and they're going to give back a list that they, to us, on what the next steps are that they recommend. And it's all preliminary still, because it'll be up to us to make the decision on the final list. But that was my understanding. And he was just, I bumped into him, and he just happened to update me really quick on that, and that was really the gist of it. And I, am I correct, Ms. Gittens? Is that pretty much?
Madam Chair, if I may, that is why the July 5th meeting, it is an extra meeting that the, the committee decided to do, so that they would have everything together to present to the board before we meet the next time. There is absolutely nothing that is going on that the board is not aware of.
So, so that was my understanding, is that they're still collaborating with RSM, and, and, and then they'll come back to us, is really the bottom line, and that's my understanding. So I'm, I mean, this process has taken a while, and I'm more than patient to wait for the audit committee to work with RSM, and then it come back to us. And I think RSM is aware that we want to be informed, so I don't think that that's a surprise to them, but I think the process is not happening overnight, and it, it is what it is. So I, at that point, at some point, we do need an update, so, and communication is always good, so I'm not denying that. I just, that's where I know where it, it is in the process, and the, it's still preliminary.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so my assumption is that they are working, RSM is working in the district. My assumption is that they have been on the job, and they have been on the job for some period of time.
Yes.
I think we should know where they have been on the job, what it is that they're doing. I mean, now the impression I'm getting is that RSM isn't doing anything until the audit committee has given them the go-ahead, and I don't think that's the case. I think RSM is working, and I think we need to be aware of what it is they're doing. They're interacting with our staff, they're making demands on staff, resources, time, et cetera. We should know what they're doing, so that, that's my, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to go back and forth anymore. I'm done, I just want to hear what others have to say.
Okay, then I'll just make, Ms. Gittens, if I may, I'll just make a comment. Okay. So it sounds to me like we know that RSM is working for us, they're our board auditor. We know that we have an audit committee that is to report to us. We heard from Ms. Gittens today that the audit committee is meeting again on the 5th of July in order to prepare a statement for us, for a report. I think that it has been a couple of months, and we haven't heard anything, and I think that's the problem. We need an update, just like, here's where we are now, this is what we're working on, and just so that we know periodically what they're doing. And, and I think that has been the problem now. So I would, I would support getting an update from both RSM and the audit committee as soon as possible. The next meeting is the 26th of July, so that's a while away, but if we get a report from the audit committee following the 5th, I think that would be fine.
Madam Chair, may I say that was the reason for the extra meeting?
Right, you just explained that.
Was to make sure that as soon as possible?
Right.
Information got to the board.
Right. And thank you for that. So then, we all agree, six of us agree that we would like an update from RSM and the audit committee.
As the liaison, Madam Chair, are you asking me to make sure that that happens?
Well, if you're in contact with the chair of the committee, yes, you shall. I, I had thought that Ms. Jordan had been communicating with RSM. I, I know that you were.
Initially, initially, I, I was the one who was in contact with them to get this going and to get them back on board, and yes, I was that person. When Ms. Gittens became the liaison, she then took over the meetings. However, I am a little bit concerned, because now we have two people who know things, and the rest of us do not know anything. So just hearing that again, that is a concern. So the 5th cannot come soon enough for us to get, and I would like a report from both.
So thank you, Ms. Gittens. As the liaison, will you ask them to send us that report as soon as they have it ready, following the 5th?
Thank you, I will. And I do want to make one statement. When we first started working with RSM, I was the chair, and I was in contact with them. Everyone on this board complained, and I was told on known certain terms that I was not to contact them or get any information, that everything was to go to all of the board members at all times, and I was not to get something that everyone else got. And Ms. Jordan even wrote an email about it, that I was getting information that the rest of you didn't have. I was the chair. I was the chair. So I don't really understand how the responsibilities of the chair changes with the person, but that's, we're not going to discuss it.
That's another discussion.
I will go back and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Prey Bruno, is that satisfactory?
Yeah, based on the conversation that I heard, it appears that the board wants to move forward with getting a feedback or a report from both RSM and the audit committee.
Yes, yes.
And the board would like Ms. Gittens to make that contact on its behalf. That's my understanding from the discussion.
Thank you.
After the meeting of the 5th.
Okay. Thank you. So now.
I do have a couple of other things.
Please continue.
Thank you. At the conference, there were two vendors that I spoke with, and the first one, Goodside Health, and several of the other members as well, spoke with them and heard their presentation as well, I think Ms. Jordan and Ms. Giovinelli. I feel that the process that they have, and I'm not going to go into all the details of it, I will send you the talking points, but basically, it's a program that is not going to cost us, the district, anything. It will allow us to help staff and students that don't have the health coverage, and it is, I would, it basically is like a teledot program, but it's much more than that. The benefits to staff and to students, I, I think is, is excellent. So I would like to at least have us, and maybe the other two of you, you know, would discuss what you thought about it, but I would like to bring it forward as asking the superintendent to see the feasibility of us using a program that does nothing but help our students and our families. An example is a kid gets sick at school, and they are able to connect them through digitally with a doctor once they get it approved and, by the parents. So by the time the parent gets there, it's not like the kid has to wait until Friday when the parents get paid to take them to the doctor. They've already had an expert opinion, and in some cases, by the time they leave school, the prescription is at the pharmacy. So there are a lot of benefits to doing this, health-wise, et cetera. So I don't know if anyone else wants to say anything, but I would like to bring forth a proposal to ask the superintendent to look into the possibilities.
And can you just repeat what that is? Did you say Goodside Health?
It's Goodside Health. I will send this to you. I thought I did send it, but it's Goodside Health. Would either of you like to?
I, I can say that I did have conversation with them at the conference. It seemed like a good product, and I did share the district website, how you go about doing that if you wanted to present something to the district. So I did give them the information for that.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Bringing vendors to the board is not the way we should be operating, it's the responsibility of the superintendent. Now, if we see or hear something that we feel is, should be, might be of interest to the administrative side of this district, then it's our responsibility to bring it to the superintendent, and for the superintendent to direct appropriate staff to examine it and come back to us. It's not, we're not to sit here and have vendors present to us, that's, that's, that's not our job. The vendors, the vendors know that they're supposed to deal with administration, because ultimately, we will have to make a decision. If we are conflicted, if we're sitting here, receiving vendor information, it should be given, we should just simply ask the, say, we say, tell the superintendent, we heard a great presentation, we think this might be of value to the district, please take a look at it, let us know what you think, but that's, that's, that's where it stops, as far as I'm concerned.
And I think that's what Ms. Gittens was saying to us, that she'd like to ask the superintendent to look into that, so.
We don't all have to agree. That's what I'm saying.
Ms. Gittens?
Well, it's, it's not a matter of everyone agreeing, and honestly, to be honest, I, it's just confusing to me, because if I say it to the superintendent, just me to the superintendent, then the rest of the board doesn't know, and the rest of the board says, well, we didn't know anything about it. So that's why I just brought it up as a possibility for the superintendent. Others of you have brought up things and said, well, Others of you have brought up things and said, "Well, you know, I understand about this program," or whatever, and we can have the Superintendent look into it. I'm just trying to do it in the sunshine and ask if I would present it to the Superintendent to look into. Just as simple as that, no decisions.
Okay. Did you have something, Ms. Jordan?
No, I just said what I had told them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. DePree Bruno, do you have any comments?
I have none, thank you, Madam Chair.
And Superintendent Bernier?
Just two quick ones. The first is, since I was out of town, I missed the opportunity to congratulate our retirees. It was an amazing reception. I thank the Chair and Mr. Dotick for being present. And Ms. Fisher, thank you. I didn't know Ms. Fisher was there. I knew the officiators that were there. I just wanted to make sure that the staff who is retiring understands that the Superintendent and this entire organization values their years of service. It is an amazing thing to be able to retire and go off and do what you want to do, and I wish them nothing but the best. And I hope that a year from now, when their FRS issues are complete and they think they want to come back to the classroom, they would choose to come back and help serve in one of our vacancies or volunteer in their classrooms or their grandchild's classroom so that we can help our young people. The other is just, there's an upcoming phone call with the Education Commission at 3:00 PM today. We just received word about a couple hours ago, and it's been confirmed the link is sent. Most likely, we are all expecting our test scores to be released, so we suspect that that may be the call. I will take the call at 3:00, and I will update you tonight at the action meeting. That's it.
Thank you.
If I may, Dr. Bernier. So Mr. Dotick, representing you very well at the event for the retirees, and Ms. Fisher tried to get everybody to re-sign up. I just wanted to let you know that.
Nice to know the team's organized around the same goal.
And I'm just going to say, we will meet again tonight at 6:00. I kind of got distracted and didn't give my comments, but I'll do that this evening. So with seeing no other business and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned.